Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse Mayor Williams for tonight's business meeting. All votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being excused. Thank you very much. Presented are the minutes for the city council business meeting, April 4th, 2022. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes will stand as presented. There are no recognitions tonight. Our next item is a presentation on the 2021 year-end fiscal report. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem and members of the city council will have Director Finance, Brian Archer, present this item.
Thank you. Mr. Archer?
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you so much. This is always my favorite meeting of the year. I get to present how we ended up and all the great work that our team did. So let's jump right in. Hopefully, you all received your book. If not, it is available online. Next slide. So, excited to report back to you that we ended up the year positive in our revenues. We'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a minute. Our expenditures are in line with the budget, but as you have heard through many of the presentations this year, that has been getting tighter and tighter. Inflation concerns our front and center, and the ability to do what we've been doing is getting more expensive. The ARPA funds process continues. We do have some dollars that we're looking at trying to get out into the community. And I really didn't want to put this up here just to not jinx, so jinx, hopefully COVID is starting to wind down. Next slide. Each year, we like to highlight some of the amazing things that have been accomplished in and around the city. As you can see, they're listed here, over nine million on patching million overlay, about sixty-seven thousand received in sales tax revenue. Building permits were down a little bit last year, but we still had activity. About one hundred and thirteen single-family, two hundred and fifty-four duplex, and seventeen commercial. Commercial, that is a larger number than historic. Usually, commercial is around eight, so that's a double there. Next slide.
Ms. Simpson?
Councilmember Simpson?
Just to clarify for the public record, that's sixty-seven million, not sixty-seven thousand, correct?
Sixty-seven million, sorry.
No worries. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you for that correction. Still making progress with the police department, especially with them being down. It's amazing that they were able to accomplish this. Unemployment, down dramatically, at three point four percent, below national, below the state, and back to levels not seen since 2019. If you remember, in 2019, we came and talked about the ability for businesses to expand in Arvada was low because they didn't have the workforce. And I think we're back there again. And thirteen of the fourteen funds meet or exceed your established fund balance goals. The only one that's not is the golf fund. We'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. Next slide. I did want to give a preview to city council of some of the work that's being done by our IT department around using data and creating dashboards. So what you see up here is an example of a performance dashboard IT has to managing projects. Please don't ask me the information. I'm just showing you what it looks like. These are not really ready for prime time, but I stole them from our IT director and wanted to share with you because they're quite exciting, and we're hoping to roll this out throughout the organization. Next slide shows, again, some information related to help desk tickets, and this is what they use to manage on a daily basis. Really putting data to work. So over the next few presentations throughout this year, we will be bringing more and more of these to you when they are available. Next slide. You asked each quarter to bring to you where we are from a general fund, fund balance perspective. As you can see, the green line is what is required. We're certainly above that today. This is a picture in time, so this is exactly at the end of 2021. This does not include our tenure funding or any additional dollars that will be placed towards CIP projects. What this does represent is in an emergency situation, these are the funds city council can use to address that. Next slide. Take a look at our red, yellow, and green, and we take a look at revenues overall for the general fund. Good performance in many categories. We'll talk a little bit about sales tax here in a minute. Property taxes up as assessed values continue to rise. Auto use tax, surprisingly, up. We'll talk about that. Use tax, up. You'll see reds on building revenues and interest revenue. Again, that is not to mean that those revenues are down. What this reflects is that they were below their budget. So building revenues were up about two point six percent. We had budgeted just at three. Interest revenues were down. We had budgeted a little over one point eight. They came in a little under that number. On the interest side, we'll talk more about the reason behind that. And again, with buildings, a lot of that was resources. They couldn't get the resources, either whether those were materials or human capital to do what they wanted to do. All the expenditures were positive. Again, we're getting close, though. We had very little money left over at the end of the year. Next slide. On the sales tax side, you will see up fifteen point four percent. That is on top of the nine point one percent that we were up the year before. Quite a growth factor. The majority of this is related to electronic shopping, and we will see that on the upcoming slides. The mayor's not here. He gets a chuckle out of liquor each time. This is the first time that I've been doing this, that our year-over-liquor, year-over-year growth in liquor has been down. So we are just thinking that a whole bunch of people bought a bunch, and they're just stored up, and they'll return back to buying again.
At the stockpile.
Yeah.
It was during the COVID time when everyone was stuck inside.
Correct. So if you remember, Councilmember Pfeiffer, we had quite the growth during that period of time, so.
Is it possible that some of those liquor sales have moved back to our restaurants?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Next slide, we'll take a little bit deeper dive into those categories. So what you will see is a breakdown in dollars and growth percentage by those same categories. You will notice the ones we highlighted in green, electronic shopping is now the third-largest category. That was brand-new to the city in 2017. And so it has grown year-over-year significantly. Now, that growth has stopped in 2022. So the first two months of 2022, it's completely flat. So we think we've peaked, or at least so far, we've peaked on that revenue growth. But it did, as you can see, run up our categories. Supermarkets, merchandise, wholesalers still are the top two, followed closely, again, by e-shopping. You will notice full-service restaurants, Councilmember Simpson, to your question, down twenty percent from nineteen to twenty, up thirty-one percent from twenty to twenty-one. If you were to draw a line from 2019 to 2021, that would be annual growth of about two point two percent. So not great, but not bad. We know our restaurants still got a ways to go. Their costs are obviously growing significantly, and so hopefully, we'll see this continue to expand.
So no order? We still see Sears catalogs being mailed out and ordering from those?
That's kind of an old way to identify the online. We don't see a lot of catalogs going out.
Can you help me understand the beer, wine, liquor store seeing a positive percentage change, but we had a negative this slide before?
Positive change is between nineteen and twenty.
Okay.
And then the negative number, if, I'm sorry, if that's not laid out very well, but the negative number is between twenty and twenty-one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Perfect.
Next slide. Same information, just looked at graphically, and you can see the rise in a couple of those categories. Again, this is from left to right, 2016 through 2021. Next slide. Auto use, as you can see, pretty much continued its growth pattern, up sixteen point eight percent. The majority of that growth came from used car sales. As the new market dried up, the new market prices stayed high, the numbers of sales was low. But if you looked at the used market, you saw thirty, in some cases, forty percent growth in that market. You heard many people bought cars in 2019 and twenty, early 2020, were able to sell them for more money than they purchased them. And so that drove this category. We will keep an eye on this, depending on what's going to happen with the chips, et cetera, to see if this growth continues. We are expecting it to pull back just a hair because we don't think prices will stay as high. But again, we like our cars and we pay up for them. Next slide. This is a slide we keep very close look on. It's representative of the investment that businesses put back into their ongoing efforts. And you can see that there was growth in 2021, which creates excitement for us in the hopes that we'll see that continue. Next slide. Finally, if we take a look at some of the other funds, you'll see this is much more colorful than it has been in years past. And the reason behind that, we'll walk through each one of these, but again, majority of it relates to inflation and the pressures we're seeing to try and get things done. So in the Parks Fund, they were very close to their year-end budget. They are going to need additional influxes to just do what they've been doing. Tax increment funds, same thing. You'll see on the community development, we put a monitor light on the year-to-date. And again, that is for the pressures moving forward. They're fine today. These are pressures moving forward related to housing and the support that they're going to need to provide. Take a look at capital projects. Again, solely on inflation, we have a couple of very large projects that are current. Seventy-second Avenue, Ralston Road, and seeing costs escalating each and every year. Water funds, similar conversation there. We do have a negative on both water and wastewater from a revenue perspective. And again, this is solely related to the reduction in building activity. And so they had a higher level of tap fee expectation and didn't reach that. And so we'll be redoing those models. We'll hear a lot about this, actually, next Monday, and talking about how we can take those dollars that were supposed to happen in '21 and '22 and spread them out throughout the next tenure cycle. Solid waste, positive both on revenues and expenditures in the short period of time that it was active. We do have the monitor light on because we're still working towards its fund balance goal. So we've still got a few years to get there, so this slide is probably going to be up here for a while. The golf fund, we talked again, actually, let me back up on the solid waste as well. We will probably be coming to city council and looking for a fund balance goal to be set on the solid waste. It's one of the items that is not in your current policy. It's kind of a cleanup, but we will present to you what we think that number should look like. Golf fund, again, they're under their goal. They're improving, and they're getting better each and every year. And so we're hoping that we can get this light off of here. And then on the insurance fund, we have a negative under expenditures. We had a couple of large claims last year. Next slide. Take a look at investments. As you can see, I'll point out a couple of things. Number one, our overall investment portfolio grew, so you can see down at the bottom, two hundred and fifty-eight million compared to two hundred and twenty-five. Couple items, obviously, we had increase in revenue, so that certainly helped both in the Parks Fund, the General Fund, and the TI Funds, and then some ARPA dollars that we're currently investing. You'll notice up at the top, we saw the portfolio return and performance go down. And we talked a little bit about this last time. As interest rates were lower, we, when we were having investments come in, we were forced to buy at a lower rate. And so while we're still at that lower rate, we're going to get less return. Now, interest rates have spiked up. Once we are, the ones we bought before are returned, we'll be able to buy at a higher level. We can't, we're not actively managing it, so we're not going to try to chase this. You know, we're going to manage to the best of the investments that are available at that period of time and buy those. And then the next time money comes into it again. And then one of the things that I think Councilmember Pfeiffer, you asked that each time we come back, is represent what investments we have in the A or below categories? Next slide. And so this is a report of those, and you can see we're right at five percent, which is exactly what we were last time. We did have a few investments drop down to the triple B-plus category on S and P. They're still A-rated on Moody's. And you'll notice they're very familiar, Morgan Stanley, Citigroup, and American Express, and they're quite small. If you look to the right, you're talking about eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five, and two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So not a lot of money. So to end, we had a good financial year from a revenues perspective. We are certainly feeling the pressure, just like everybody else, from an inflationary period of time, and we look forward to this next two-year budget.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I have a question, what you just mentioned about the inflationary pressure. So our, our financial modeling has, carries forward a factor for inflation that we can predict on. How is our factor that we use in that model compared to what we're actually seeing in inflation?
Well, I can't say it any other way than we blew it. So our inflationary growth factor is about two and a half percent. And so we're going to have to fix that.
And what are we seeing in actual? Are we measuring that independently of the city at all?
We are. It depends what. So if we take a look at, like, plastic pipe, Sharon told us the other day, her growth factor there is somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty percent. I know my team just had a meeting with the vehicle side of things, and they're seeing parts increases at thirty to forty percent. In some things, we're not seeing growth at all.
What's our energy cost inflation factor, do you know?
I, we have not looked at that one yet, but last we heard it was over six percent.
Right.
Yeah. So we are definitely going to, we literally met today, and we're going to start calculating that next week on what we're going to need to put in as an overall inflationary factor.
Right, into our model for the year going forward.
Yep, yep. So what we'll do is we'll model a pretty large inflationary factor over the next couple of years and then return it back to our normal out in the future.
Right. Well, it's on one hand, you know, inflation helps us in our revenue side.
Yes, it does.
But, but it hurts us on the expenditure side. And these numbers we just saw here, obviously, probably reflect some amount of inflation. Certainly, next year, they'll be reflecting a lot more on the, on the income side. But in this presentation, we wouldn't really see the expenditure side.
You're correct.
But.
Yeah, I mean, for example, if you just assume that our sales tax growth, a chunk of that was related to inflation. Inflationary was somewhere between six point nine and seven point eight percent. If you took that right off, then your inflationary sales tax growth of fifteen is not quite the same.
Not the same, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So it might be a little off, but it's something we need to pay attention to, is regarding the cost of goods right now. I mean, in general, I mean, I know we're wrapping up the fiscal year '21, but I haven't heard us prepare around, I'll give you an example. I know for every ten fleet vehicles, the buying power of those fleet vehicles is about a forty percent reduction. So when I expect to buy ten, I'm only going to be able to buy six.
Yep.
So how, what's the plan around the city to deal with our buying power to our need in our asset management perspective with some of that?
Yeah, I mean, the example you use around vehicles, we've done multitude of things. They've looked at leases. And so they've converted some of the light vehicles to that scenario, where we might lease for a year or two and then sell back and then try to continue to purchase. They've also worked on using our buying power with the state. So with our bids that include, you know, large entities to try to buy more there. And then other than that, we're going to have to add more dollars to continue to be on the same.
Yeah, because I know the snowplazes specifically what I was looking at, and we needed to buy ten, and we can only afford six because the cost jumped so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we need a statewide fleet, so I'm, I'm sure we're in the same boat here in this, in here. So we just need to know what is that impact
Yep.
from our operations until we can recover from that. Either we need to increase our budget and just eat it. It is, part of me says we shouldn't encourage that behavior and hold back and buy less and then force supply and demand to go a different way. But that is something that needs to be in this conversation, I would think, in the, over the next twelve to twenty-four months.
Absolutely. It'll be part of our budget cycle this summer, for sure.
Yeah, because I'm only hitting one tip of many things that are seeing some weird. And, and as, as some of us are realizing, some of it's just, somebody's just taking advantage of the situation and getting more margin and not being real, but some of it is legitimate. So hopefully, you're all keeping an eye open on, on how to protect the taxpayer dollars and these, these expenses that are jumping forty, eighty percent increase.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Well, again, Mr. Archer, you always do a really, really good job of this, and appreciate you and your team for the work that, that you do to put this great information together and make it understandable. So.
Thank you, Pro Tem.
All right. Next on our agenda is a public comment for items not scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing. All comments at this time are limited to three minutes per person. Public comment is your opportunity to talk to your city council. While we might not respond, we will refer any questions or comments or question, or issues to our city team. Do we have anybody signed up? So I gave that whole spiel for nothing. Anybody in council chambers wish to address city council?
No, thank you.
All right. Our, our one citizen in council chambers. Well, thank you for being here, too, our one citizen. No. Great. Well, we'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda, which is R-22-026. A resolution accepting an annexation petition concerning 7850 Alchire Street, finding said petition substantially compliant with CRS 31-12-107 PRIN-1, and setting a public hearing for June 6th, 2022, at 6:15 PM for city council to determine whether the area meets the requirements of CRS 31-12-104 and 105, and is considered eligible for annexation. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda item, R-22-026, be approved.
Thank you. Motion for approval, all votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Next on the, on the agenda are resolutions. We only have one resolution to consider tonight, which is R-22-027. A resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada, Colorado, and the State of Colorado Department of Transportation for the removal and cleaning of unauthorized encampments on Colorado Department of Transportation properties located in the city of Arvada. Mr. Devon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. This IGA will address the fact that from time to time, our, our city team members, particularly our community resource, community outreach resource and enforcement team, core team from the police department, will encounter unauthorized encampments on CDOT property on their right-of-way. This is something that is not unusual, happens all over the metro area. In fact, I'm sure all over the state. And that's why some local governments in the metro area, including Adams County and Denver, have worked with CDOT to enact a intergovernmental agreement that authorizes the agency to be able to go in and conduct camp cleanups, which we would do with a licensed contractor that's licensed to deal with the kinds of materials that are sometimes found or most times found in these encampments, which include items that need to be handled in an environmentally professional way. These, what we've learned is that the timely cleanup of these encampments is critical, not only helping support CDOT's control of their property, but also if you leave those encampments in place and do not address them, then most of the time, they will expand. They will enlarge. So by being able to go in and address these encampments quickly, we're able to actually control our costs, be able to deal with them in a responsible manner. The IGA requires us to meet CDOT standards for notice, which is ten days, which is quite a bit significant, more than what we would normally do in, in dealing with encampments. But other than that, the conditions associated with the cleanups is consistent with what we're doing. And we are recommending approval of the agreement. Want to mention, if it's okay with Councilmember Pfeiffer, that Councilmember Pfeiffer helped facilitate getting together with the CDOT Superintendent of the Denver Metro Region. Everyone was very collaborative, and we're mirroring, again, what other metro area communities are doing in terms of dealing with these, with these cleanups. We estimate that there will be no fiscal impact because CDOT will reimburse up to five thousand dollars for each cleanup. And if we can get to those encampments early, then that keeps, that, that keeps the cost down, actually, by being able to get that done. Most of the cleanups that we've done have been at or under that five thousand dollar limit, again, because if we can get to them quickly. So we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Ms. Rush, do we have any member of the public that would like to speak to this resolution? All right, thank you. Any questions or action from council? Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just want to make comment, but somebody else can take the action. But I think it's a good collaboration, and it's something that is dire. And I'll just give kudos to Adams County, a former Arvada, and Steve Odericio is the one who helped drive this as a template. And I think we were the second organization, other than Denver, might have been the second, to sign on such agreement to get reimbursed. So I think it was a huge win for us and ability to kind of manage the situation.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there's no other questions.
Go ahead and make your motion.
All right. I move that R-22-027, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada, Colorado, and the State of Colorado Department of Transportation for the removal and cleaning of unauthorized encampments on Colorado Department of Transportation properties located in the city of Arvada be approved.
Motion for approval, all votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you. We do have one reading for first reading. Do I have a volunteer to do that? Or two, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I move the council bill 22-052, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation and the City of Arvada, pertaining to Seacrest Elementary Safe Route to School CDOT Project Number 24677. And also move that Council Bill 22-053, an ordinance amending and restating in its entirety the Police Money Purchase Retirement Plan now known as the City of Arvada Police Retirement Plan, both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for May 2nd, 2022, at 6:15 PM.
Thank you. Motion for approval, all votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. All right. Now we will consider the ratification and approval of CP 2022-001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's three-mile plan pursuant to Section 31-12-105 PRIN-1 CRS as amended. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr., excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. This is essentially, basically, a housekeeping item in order to basically take an action that indicates that our, that we're in compliance with the state statute that you read. And I think it's important to point out that during the previous year, the city did not annex any property more than three miles from the previous city boundary, that we don't, and that we do have a, a plan in place for future annexations within the comprehensive plan, which includes the boundary and the future land use map. So we're recommending that you ratify and approve the resolution by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is basically the group that does all the work in collaboration with our team on this one. And they approved it by a seven-and-o vote, and we're recommending your approval as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions or action from council? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Go ahead and make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move that CP 2022-0001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's three-mile plan pursuant to Section 31-12-105 PRIN-1, PRIN-E. Colorado revised statutes as amended be ratified and approved. This motion is based on the finding of facts of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Motion for approval, all votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with the mayor being absent. Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing for two proposed ordinances. Council Bill 22-048, an ordinance amending Section 10.3.1, general provisions of an ordinance number 1324 of the City of Arvada, Colorado, and Council Bill 22-049, an ordinance amending Section 74-62, membership, appointment of members, term of office of Article III, Planning Commission of Chapter 74, planning and development of Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Ryan Satelski will present this item.
Thank you very much.
So actually, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on doing it, but I, I'm happy to, and I'm going to do it in partnership with Emily. You recall that, and, and this is about our Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments. You recall that as a result of our land development code changes, a lot of the cases that were going to the Board of Adjustments no longer needed to go to the Board of Adjustments because they were either going to council as a major modification. What, what goes to a Board of Adjustment is a lay of the land. What goes to a Board of Adjustment is a lay of the land type scenario. So it's something that is a challenge with the land. Maybe it's the slope, or maybe it's a particular angle, or those types of things. So those are the things that go in terms of a variance to the Board of Adjustments. Since the new land development code went in place, we've only had one case go to the Board of Adjustments. As such, having a board in place that really is a very technical board that needs a lot of routine and depth of knowledge in order to be really successful, we felt that we were underutilizing a board being in place. So what the ordinances that you have in front of you allows us to combine the body of the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment, so that we still have two separate boards, but that the boards are being -- act upon separately. So similar to how City Council sits as the housing authority during part of its meeting. If there were a Board of Adjustment case, we would bring that, and the Planning Commission would sit as the Board of Adjustment. And then they would complete that meeting, and then they'd move on to the Planning Commission. So this allows us to do that because of the number of cases we have with the BOA. However, what it doesn't do is it doesn't eliminate the Board of Adjustment. So should we, in the future, get additional workload for the Board of Adjustment? That means that it's impractical for the Board of Adjustment to sit as the Planning Commission. It's just too much work. Then Council can, at that time, separate them and appoint a different body for the Board of Adjustment as well. There are some other minor cleanups just related to how the Planning Commission is appointed, and the fact that the current ordinance doesn't allow more than two Planning Commission members to also sit on the Board of Adjustments. And so those are the types of cleanups that you're seeing here. But in general, I think I've described what the intent of the action is tonight. Anything else, Emily? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sutelsky. I'll now open the public comment portion of the hearing. Ms. Rush, do we have anybody signed up? I will close the public portion comment of the hearing and open it up for Councilmember Questions or Action. Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Ryan. I just, I think it makes sense, but I have to ask, is this a best practice that we're seeing that other cities do? You know, by combining these two, what do we see happening elsewhere?
Sure. We actually have seen this, and several other cities have done this. And it really comes down to how your caseload is. And so what we want to do is, you can understand that if you're seeing a lot of development cases, but you're only seeing them once a year, and then you're trying to recall the different provisions and those types of things, if you're not regularly practiced at it, it's not as good of a best practice to ask somebody to come in once a year and make a decision on it. So it's a best practice to make sure that the folks that are going into this technical detail are really well-practiced at it. And that's why we believe combining these two bodies that don't necessarily rule on the same thing, but they're similar in practice and technical detail, so that they can be aware. And actually, on May 10, Emily is going to provide a legal training to the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission, sitting as one, so that they're aware of the differences of both. And I should also point out that this body just appointed the former chair of the Board of Adjustment to the Planning Commission as part of its Boards and Commissions recommendations. So we do have experience from both sides going forward to make it a really robust set of committees and boards.
Thank you. Any other questions or action by Council? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move the Council Bill 22-048, an ordinance amending Section 10.3.1, general provisions of ordinance number 1324 of the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved on final reading numbered 4795 and ordered published by Title Only.
Thank you. Motion for approval. All votes are cast. And that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Okay.
And then I will also move that Council Bill 22-049, an ordinance amending Section 74-62, membership, appointment of members, term of office of Article III Planning Commission of Chapter 74, planning and development of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading numbered 4796 and ordered published by Title Only.
Thank you. And motions for approval. All votes are cast. And that motion passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. I'll now open public hearing, Council Bill 22-050, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2022. Mr. Devin.
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. We'll have Mr. Archer present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, Council. So back to talk a little bit about our first budget ordinance. Next slide. So we're trying to accomplish three things tonight. Number one, what we call our carryover. And these are projects, programs, other items that City Council approved in 2021 that we weren't able to complete. Next, we have a group of one-time items to present to City Council that are items that were identified during our last budget cycle that we did not have a funding source for. And finally, we have some new requests, which are items that have come up since you approved the last budget. And I realize the last budget was approved in October. And these are items that have happened since then that we're trying to go ahead and capture. And these should not be new to City Council. You should be familiar with each one of these. They've been presented either in a workshop or in a session up until this point. This is getting formal approval. Next slide. So we'll take a look at the carryover items first. This is across all funds. You will see approximately 33 million. We do have a mistake on this slide I want to point out. On the stormwater, it says 34 million. That actually should read 4 million. So I apologize for that. But overall, you can see these are the dollars that we're asking to be carried forward. And I can confirm that the amount that is in the ordinance is correct. Next slide. A little bit more detail on what you saw on the previous page. In the general fund of the 863,000, some is software-related, some are legal fees to cases that we have that are active, and finally, some operating dollars around an upgrade of the phone system, expansion of our Google workspace, and some security items. 863,000 is less than 1%. Actually, it's 0.7% of our total budget. So we did a really good job of spending what you allocated last year. If you take a look at all the other funds, you will see the majority of those are related to capital projects. And the way that we budget in governmental accounting, unfortunately, in enterprise funds, the water fund, wastewater, stormwater, golf, and solid waste, we have to rebudget every year for those capital projects. So whatever's not finished, we have to carry forward and rebudget. So you will see 23 million is related to that, approximately 2 million in street maintenance, 4.6 million in ARPA funds. Again, these are dollars we received last year that we're still working on programming, some purchase of some equipment that was ordered, and vehicles that were ordered last year that we have not received yet, and then finally, some operating dollars. And you can see the list of the capital projects, ones that should look very familiar. Ralston Trunk Sewer, Ralston Water Treatment Plant, Highway 93 Tanks, Lake Harbor Dredging. Next slide. These are a little out of order, so I apologize. This is related to the one-time detail that we are requesting out of the general fund. And we'll talk a little bit about where these funds come from here in a couple of slides. But this is what we're requesting the City Council will allocate these dollars to. So you will see of the 9 million, 3.3 to streets, 3 million to a replacement of our ERP system, 750,000 to evidence storage, 625 to help with the transition of the Apex field operations from Apex to parks, some IEDA funding. If you remember, about four years ago, City Council asked us to refill up the IEDA dollars to the tune of 500,000. And we've been doing this over a few years. And this is the last piece of that. So that's 250,000 to make that total 500,000 over the last four years. Some dollars for the Vance Street Flats. This is to help with the housing project, the study, the Pomona Parcel, and then some miscellaneous operating dollars. We can certainly dive into that detail if you need. It is included in your packet. Next slide. And these are the new requests that we're asking to formally budget. So you can see the largest one that jumps out to you would be in the construction fund, 35 million, that's the Myers Pool. So that's the bond issue that we did in December, and now asking the formal ability to spend those dollars. Next slide. A little bit more detail on that. Again, you see capital projects at 9.8 million. Those capital projects are dollars that we received in 2021 that we are then budgeting in 2022. For example, some parks dollars, some transportation dollars, and some fees that we collected that we then will spend this year. Myers Pool, and then parks maintenance, the dollars related to getting those fields ready, some police officer pay to make sure that we can stay competitive, and then some operating dollars. Next slide. So this is why they're a little out of order. But talking about where did we come up with the one-time dollars? So we just had a presentation on our year-end. And so this flows from that a little bit. If you take a look at the revenues, you will see four categories, really, sales tax, auto-use building revenues, and then our additional dollars related to franchises, grants, and general use. Overall, we collected about 8.3 million more than we had budgeted. And again, our budget's about 106 million for the general fund, so that's about 8%. So Councilmember Marriott, to your question earlier, that's about inflation on the revenue side. So you were a little ahead of us there, but there you go. On the expenditure side, we had about 2.8 million in savings. We are asking to carry forward about 864,000. You just saw that, leaving us about 1.9 million, roughly 2 million, in expenditure savings. Overall, change to our model of about 10.3 million. Tonight, we're proposing allocating about 9.2 million of that in one-time use, about 470,000 in a new budget request. Again, that's specifically for the general fund. You saw in the new budget request, all funds is a little larger than that, obviously. And overall, would leave us about 645,000 that we would then put towards the 10-year model or towards other sources that City Council would like to see. So. Next slide. One thing that we wanted to put up in front of you was related to a policy change that City Council has been asking for. And this relates to new revenue and what we can do with our street maintenance deficit. And so what you will see on the screen is multitude of ways that you, City Council, could choose to change your policy that would direct us, if we have new revenue, what we would do with it. So you can see there's many ideas. And again, there's probably another 100 ideas that we could come up with. This is just to get the juices flowing, the thought process from City Council to how you might want to update your policy. So you can see up there, there's 50% of additional revenue be applied to streets, 500,000 will be applied to streets, new revenue. After we balance the model, we would put X dollars to it, savings from CIP projects. Any of these we can do. You will notice that we made a very conceited effort to put 3.3 million of the 9 million towards streets this go-around. We will be redoing our 10-year model, both from the operating side and the capital side. And we will be putting additional dollars towards streets there as well. But if we can get some direction, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Before we move on to Council comments or questions, I'll open up the public portion of this hearing. Ms. Rush, do we have anybody for public comment? I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and open it up for Council comments or action. Mr. Marriott.
So do you want comment on streets maintenance proposal now or ongoing conversation?
Yeah, I think it's an ongoing conversation. So.
Let me just make a general comment, I guess. So I think there's probably a lot of ways to do it. I would tend to lean away from using one-time revenues to do it. I think, you know, in my time on Council, we have almost always had one-time funds, although the amounts have varied greatly from as much as we have this year, maybe even slightly more at one time, to other times being very small numbers. So I think that's an unreliable way about going about it, particularly with the entrance into this very high inflationary environment that we're entering into that most likely looks to me like will be around for a while. We could actually end up on the other side of this. We could end up with a deficit at the end of the year instead of one-time funds. We could have one-time expenses or something. I don't know what we would call it. But so I think, I'm afraid that, to me, doesn't seem like it's a good route to go. I do think streets maintenance is, if not our number-one core responsibility, it's got to be at least number two. You know, I think public safety is obviously probably number one. But streets has got to be next. And I think we have to close the gap between what we need to be spending and what we are spending. I think part of it's a capacity issue. Mr. Devin and I have talked about this several times about, you know, even if you had the money, can you even deploy it all and get the work on the ground? And I think over these last few years, we've been, you know, working our way towards a place where we can deploy more money. And so I think it's time for us to start setting aside more money for our core responsibility. I've always thought that we have the ability to grow our way into it if we were to put growth or some percentage of growth towards it. Now, don't be mistaken, that is reprioritizing because you can't put that growth towards other things you might want to do as well. But I think in recognizing that it is such a core responsibility for me, I would suggest that as we go forward and discuss this and look at it, that we look at something that's far more sure than just something that if it's in excess of everything else we want to do, because I think that may never be achieved, or that it's some percentage of one-time funds because we may have a period of time here where we have no or very insignificant one-time funds. But I don't think that absolves us of a responsibility of this core responsibility. So those would just be my comments on it at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Yes, just a question on, given the range of the one-time fund being a lot or a little each year, would it make more sense to do a percentage than to do an actual amount since it ranges so greatly?
You mean a percentage of the one-time? Yeah, absolutely, we could do that. Yep.
I'm just saying, is it a better practice?
It's probably a better practice to do a percentage, yes.
Okay.
The challenge is, like Councilmember Marriott pointed out, I mean, there's been years that we've had close to $1 million. And there's been years we've had $15 million. But a percentage would be easier to apply than just a flat-dollar amount, for sure.
Sure. And the second question I had was around the vehicle purchases. Have we discussed if these are going to be hybrid? I know some of them can't be hybrid vehicles, but if they are or not?
Yes. So I know earlier today, we received some information on that. And I'm happy to give it unless you would like to.
Well, what I would offer is that we are incorporating that as a strategic result in our strategic plan, where we will be developing, I believe, a plan to, you know, a master plan for our vehicles. I'm going to ask.
When we bring the strategic plan to the workshop on May 2, and even ahead of that, we'll send a draft, there is a strategic result that is regarding development of a transition plan to electronic vehicles. I think electric vehicles.
And I will offer, I know that we have five hybrid police interceptors, two hybrid escapes, and an electric F-150 on order. So.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer.
So you got a Lightning? Good.
I want to drive it.
Because that's all CDOT orders now. The state requires it's only Lightning's moving forward. There is no other vehicle you're allowed to have. It's not electric, you can't buy it. The governor personally signs off on anything that's not electric. But are we putting in the infrastructure? I know we're digressing, but let's make sure we put in the infrastructure. We'll find out on May 10 or whenever you tell us, but.
It will be, that will be part of the plan.
Because some of these one-time funds have to support some of that, too. So when we're talking about dicing up money, we all have competing priorities, so. Okay, cool. So yes, we have competing priorities. So to go all the way back, thanks, Lisa, for asking that question and letting me go down that rabbit hole because I was wondering about greening the fleet. So that's good news. But going back to the original question, a percentage I think I would agree with as well. I mean, obviously, if the funds are here, we can do a percentage. But I also agree with Marriott that we have to have a sustainable revenue source or allocated funds in a pool that needs to stay there and not ebb and flow because it does make it difficult, I think, for Public Works to try to plan their engineering. Because if we give them money now, which is April, they can't programmatically put it in their construction plans until maybe a year or two out. So, you know, the predictability of a stable funding source. So, you know, it's the predictability of a stable funding source, I think is a struggle I have with both your answers, but maybe we can find something in the middle that helps up it a little bit, but, you know.
We do, that's a great question and a very valid point, and we are still working towards getting additional funds. We do have a streets maintenance fund today that has an ongoing set amount that they have every year, and then these dollars are to add to that, but your point's super valid, because they've already put the contracts out for this year.
Yeah, because you don't see that for years, the time you do it. So how do you have your engineering staff, your design staff, when they're like, oh my gosh, I got another 2 million dollars now? Now hopefully, we have some shelf-ready projects we can pull down, but those were not in the pipeline.
They do, and the other thing they take advantage of is the weather. So in years like last year where we had a good weather season, they'll just push as far as they can go, and they have projects that are in the queue, and they'll just add them and just keep going and going.
Okay, and then, oh, some of the money, can it, I know we say streets, but I think we should say generically, you know, our mobility infrastructure, it should be allocated. And I'm specifically going to call out the ADA issue needs to be addressed. I mean, it's what, an 80-plus million-dollar expense that will only continue to grow. If we can just, not just say it all goes there, but, you know, I hear those rumblings around the 50-50 program and the concrete and the sidewalks and the winding sidewalk, it's just, there's other things than just roads, and I know that's a priority, but this day and age, I think with micro-mobility and the things we're starting to see happen around, we, we have to look at the overall infrastructure, maybe, hopefully, which is a pipe dream, to get a few cars off the road, but, you know, maybe, maybe it can happen. We just got to look holistically.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, if I could just share, today there was, there is a lot of work underway related to incorporating the ADA, and today there was a full workshop with a large group of folks to strategize about some of the challenges, curb cuts, driveways, and those pieces. It's, it's a process to get there, but the process is in the works related to that. And then you'll see the transportation plan and the further looking out related to transportation mobility in the recommendations related to the strategic plan. So I'm feeling really good about the comments coming up tonight because they're in the information that you'll see.
Good. And that's not used just because of the physical barrier of our past development to hold us back from making the right decision. Like, I'm thinking of like my grandparents' old street on Sheridan Court, very, very narrow sidewalks, very, very wide road, let, you know, but yet you can go to the next street over that has a narrow road, narrow sidewalks, okay, we're going to have to get into the yard a little bit more. Let's just make sure we, I'm encouraging that we have a plan and be comfortable with those plans to address the design challenges in every scenario, so eventually we can get through it all.
And that's what they're working on, is to have that plan. And, and I know you are aware of what the biggest challenge is with this, and that's the cost. If there's right-of-way issues in those changes, that's very costly.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes, well, I'll just echo what's been said tonight. I mean, streets are a top priority for me as well, and I was going to also mention ADA and compliance, so I'll just, I'll repeat that. And I think for me, it is also finding a sustainable revenue source. So I'm, I'm aware that I believe we're going to have a surface improvement plan we'll be looking at soon, so I think that'll be integral to part of this conversation. The only thing that I want to add is that for the one-time funds today, I'm, I'm happy to see the Pomona Parcel study being in there. I know that's something that many residents in District 1 have been asking for for quite a while, and so to see us take that next important step and figure out how we can best develop that, develop that piece so that our residents get, you know, what they've been asking for. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. I just want to echo all the conversation that's already been had with roads. I know that's a major, major issue in District 2 as well, as well as a lot of these grants that we're offering to some of these important charities. You know, we, we have critical infrastructure needs, and I do agree with Mr. Marriott that roads are right up there with public safety, and in my opinion, also water infrastructure. Those would be our main three. However, you know, investment in our people is also really important, and, you know, what's the point of having roads if you don't have people that are able to get out and use them? So I'm very pleased to see some of these initiatives that'll go a long way into investing into our human capital as well. And then if there are no other comments, I'll make the motion.
I've got one question, and then you can have the, the motion. So with regard to Myers Pool, obviously, that's a, the Jefferson County Public Schools and Apex Recreation are all participating in, in this new adventure with the replacement of the Myers Pool. The 35 million dollars in this request, is that just our portion?
That's the entire portion. The city will be running the project. It will be a shared cost between the school district and the city moving forward.
Okay, now I just wanted to make.
We'll be accounting for everything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that wasn't just the city's obligation.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Simpson, you may make the motion.
All right, thank you. I move that CB 22-050, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2022 be approved on final reading number 4797 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you very much. I will now open public hearing CB 22-051, an ordinance amending subsection 70-103, print A of Chapter 70, personal rules of the city code. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of the council. Last year, Juneteenth became a United States federal holiday, and since then, employers throughout the country are looking at whether they should be designating this, this date as an observed paid holiday for their employees. We have reviewed the establishment of this, of this day as a city observed paid holiday and concluded that it's an action that we would recommend to the city council. We believe it supports the historical and current, and current significance of, of Juneteenth. We also believe it supports and acknowledges and encourages our team members to celebrate and, and observe the holiday and celebrate our inclusive culture, and we also believe it continues to help meet our total compensation philosophy, since this would be, approving this holiday would make us competitive with other cities in our region. So adding Juneteenth as an official recognized city holiday is what we would recommend. This would require us to amend the, the code as, as outlined in the, in the recommendation, and we're looking for your approval tonight of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Ms. Rush, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, well then, I guess I will close. I didn't open it. I guess I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it, the hearing for council member questions or action. Ms. Smith.
Happy to do the motion if there's no questions. Oh, you got it. I refuse my motion request over to Councilmember Mormon.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Smith, I, I'll be happy to make the motion.
Please make the motion.
Okay. I move that CB 22-051, an ordinance amending subsection 70-103, parentheses A of Chapter 70, personnel, personnel rules of the city code be approved on final reading numbered 4798 and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I did have a question. That's effective this year, right? So this year will be part of the compensation package?
Correct.
For this calendar year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mormon, if you could, there you go. Thank you. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you very much for your work on all the public hearings tonight. Next on the agenda is our second public comment section. We have nobody wishing to speak. Anyone in council chambers like to address city council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our council reports. Do we have any council reports tonight? Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Jones. I'd just like to announce that Councilmember Smith and I will be having our monthly town hall next Tuesday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM. It will be virtual, and we'll be fortunate to have our Arvada Police Chief, Link Straight, joining us to talk about public safety.
Great, thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I just wanted to report, I toured today the AVI Old Town Affordable Housing Project being done by Foothills Housing Solutions today, and it was quite impressive. That was a, an old development that they owned, that was a relatively small number, 30-some units in a 1970s development that they demolished and are building a new building there. Four stories tall, about 100 units and, and amenities. It's, it's lux, man. It's really, really nice, beautiful development, and I think in a good spot for that, and they're doing a really terrific job in executing on that, on that project, and I think it's going to be a real positive thing for us.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you for this past, not this past holiday weekend, but the weekend before, was the Arvada Kite Festival, and I just wanted to extend a sincere congratulations to the festivals committee. I actually saw on social media some interesting traffic, people inquiring more or less how to get involved in helping festivals, how they can help, so I just wanted to share that process really quick. Essentially, every December, there is a call-out in the Arvada Report on the city and on the city website for people willing to apply for boards and commissions. There are 14 boards and commissions that are volunteer here for the city, everything from planning commission to indeed festivals, and festivals is one of the hardest-working committees out there. It's also one of the most fun. So again, that's December, January timing. If you are interested in volunteering for that, please do so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I just want to add, you can always volunteer at a festival, so you just have to call the festival commission and volunteer for them. You don't have to be on the board.
Excellent.
So I think they would absolutely take anyone to help, so.
Great point. Great point. Thank you very much. Mr. Devon, anything for us tonight?
Just a reminder, next Monday night, we'll have an update on our quarterly bond projects and also an update on our utilities, infrastructure, financial planning on April 25th.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.